Can you do the prayer? I'm sorry, I get sent. You didn't know, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
No, I'm not on the spot.
You can handle it, I know.
Let's pray. Our Father in Heaven, we thank you that we can bow our hearts before you. We thank you that we can come to you and depend upon you for your help, your strength, your wisdom, your guidance. And Lord, as we come into this city commission meeting, we pray that your hand would be upon each of us. And dear God, that each one will do their very best. And dear God, that we will be able to see our city continue to move forward. For this is our home. This is what we love. And dear Lord, I just pray today that the power of your Spirit will touch all of our ministries that we have in this town. I pray, God, that you will touch our leaders. And dear God, that you will bless them. And God, that you will strengthen them. I thank you for the Lord Jesus Christ that came, that we could have life. And we ask everything in his lovely name. Amen.
Okay, they tell me it's my turn to make the flags. Attention, position, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I would like to say welcome to each and every one of you. We're glad you're here. And if there's any Irish in the crowd, Happy St. Patrick's Day to you. Okay. Item number one is consider approval of the agenda. Item number two, consider approval of the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion in that matter.
Sub move.
Second. Commissioner Hall. And then Vice Mayor Harry, second.
It's okay. You don't need to panic, we're okay. It's gonna be.
Commissioner Hall, and then the second by Vice Mayor Harry. Item number three is commissioners' comments. I thought I have a couple that I might mention. I had the opportunity to speak to two groups this past week and weekend, weekend. And it keeps coming up about recycling. And I did want to mention to you that I've ordered a small can, which is smaller than the big green one with that. And with recycling, it's not going to cost me any more dollars for recycling. So, I just wanted to mention that to everyone, because that comes up from time to time. And if you recycle, you have less to go in your big garbage container for some of us. Now, some people still have to use that big one, but I did want to share those thoughts with you. Number two is, I would like to challenge Mary Ann and Brian to come up with a way, maybe that for this summer, we might have a plan or something that maybe we could hire some inmates or some of the people through our courts and get the supervision form to put them to work to help Mr. Bryce out when the weeds are growing and the grass is growing so tall. While it may take a little bit more money, it won't take near the money if we hired employees to do that. It would be through the summer or whatever it might be. And maybe if you decide that. That's just my thought, it's not all commissioners. But I'm just sharing that if you would explore that idea and maybe come back to us.
We're actually working on something that I'll report on later this evening.
Okay, sir. That's great to hear.
I'm glad you brought that up, because I saw that. I guess you'd put a couple of sheets of paper on Little Rock in our propellers. I'd be interested in trying to work out something that I support you on that.
Well, I think, Mary Ann, it may be through the courts and the judges here and you and whatever y'all work at.
We, at present time, keep a list of needs of departments. And if we have someone who's eligible to do community services, capable, then we turn them over to the department. We, sometimes because of the type of offenses, it's not someone that we would want to, for example, if it's petty larceny, we don't particularly think they should be remembered.
Okay, we understand.
For working where my purse is. But we do try to do that, but there may be other things that we can do.
Okay, well, thank. Go ahead, James, you have something else.
All right. James, I thought of what I was gonna ask you on the way up here. Did you have much response on the plans for the pool, or do you know? On requests for plans, or have you had much response, or do you know?
I've had some, but we have a training company that is keeping track of that and standing out.
Do we have a copy of that at West Southwest Construction News, or could you check on that and make sure we do have? Okay.
Very good. Anybody else?
No.
Okay, if not, then we'll move on to citizens' participation. We do encourage citizens to communicate with us in the audience. We have a timeframe of three minutes and a 12-minute limit per topic. But again, sometimes things are going on in our community that we may not be aware of or something, and we do welcome input from the citizens. Okay, no one coming forward then. We'll move on to item number five. Mayor's presentation of certificates of appreciation for tornado response. Canadian Valley Rural Electric, is there someone here representing them?
No.
I think there's two people here. Well, I don't know if you, we gave out some proclamations before in our commission meeting, and not intentionally, but we accidentally overlooked this group. And they did a tremendous amount for our relief here, and I apologize for that. But I want you to know that it is greatly appreciated what you did for this community during those difficult times. And so I'll read this. It says, "City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, certificate of appreciation presented to Canadian Valley Rural Electric Co-op for the support they provided to the City of Shawnee during the response to and recovery from the May 19 tornado. Thank you so much for what y'all did."
I'd like to thank you and our acceptance, on behalf of the 7,000-plus members of the Canadian Valley Co-op that made this possible.
They contributed to that, right? Wow.
Penny at a time. We had our fun and it's helped them and a lot of other organizations. We've helped with the kids' base park.
Sure I have.
Whatever. But this is directly from the people from Canadian Valley, the customers that do that.
Well, that's.
And it's penny at a time, and that's how it added up.
Thank you again, so much. Item number six is a presentation of resolution of appreciation to Rhonda Masquart for five years of employment for our company, with our city. Is that what it says? Is Rhonda here?
I was five when I started.
Oh, okay. Thirty-eight years, right?
Yes, let me count.
Huh?
Yes.
You're too young. I'll take, look, thirty-eight years. Brian, you need to help us with this. This is why, this is, this is paying the asking.
I want to pee off.
Wow. You know, stop thinking about that. There aren't a lot of people that worked at a job, paid for that many years with one company or one organization. And the rumor is, and you correct me, is that you were working for Walmart and came down here just for temporarily, or temp? How'd that happen?
Terry Powell needed someone for two weeks. His secretary was going in the hospital. I just got out of high school, yes, added up, no help. And I thought, okay, why not? I came down here Thursday night, he said, okay, be here Monday. I went back and said I won't be back and started here on Monday, and.
What a great story.
I just stayed.
It's an honor for us, the commission, and for everyone in the city that works with you. Let me read this resolution. A resolution expressing appreciation to Rhonda Masquart for over thirty-eight years of loyal service to the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma. Directing that said resolution be spread upon the official records of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, authorizing a copy be presented to Rhonda. Whereas November the 10th, 1975, was an important day in the City of Shawnee for the reason that Rhonda Masquart commenced her employment with the city on said day and has served the city and its inhabitants for over thirty-eight years. Rhonda began her employment as a part-time secretary in community development role on November the 10th, 1975. She then served as Secretary of Finance, Secretary for the City Clerk, Treasurer, Deputy City Treasurer, Acting City Treasurer, Finance Director, and is currently the cash management administrator of the city. Whereas, Rhonda has served the city and its inhabitants in a loyal, dedicated, unselfish, and untiring manner for the years and has elected to retire. Whereas, it is both fitting and proper for the City of Shawnee to recognize Rhonda and her many contributions of loyal service to the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, that they hereby express to Rhonda their appreciation for her many years of loyal, dedicated, unselfish, and untiring service to the city and its inhabitants. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the official records of the City of Shawnee, Oklahoma, and that a copy here be presented to Rhonda with the hope that she shall enjoy much good health, happiness, and good fortune in the years to come. Passed and approved this 17th day of March.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I don't know if that, I think it's good to recognize Rhonda, but I think it's a sad day for our city to see such a great employee deciding to go hunting and fishing and do all that, grandkids and all those things, so.
If Walmart won't take you back, call us back.
Item number seven, city manager's going to present the employee of the month to Julie Daniels, Police Department Dispatch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As the city manager, you get to talk to dispatch a lot. And you call down there and you immediately let them know who you are. That way, they know who they're talking to, it doesn't put them off, it doesn't put you off. And just something happens that this weekend, I called. And I always ask, who's this? Because you can't tell, these girls all sound the same. But Julie's one of those gals that you call in dispatch all the time, and she's always got the answers. And in fact, let me read a little bit about her. Julie followed in her mother's footsteps becoming a dispatcher. She first started dispatching with Potawatomi County and after four years joined the Shawnee Police Department Dispatch team. She's the mother of four, and I think everybody's here with her back there, right? Ranging from one and a half to 10 years old, and in her spare time, Julie likes to sleep. Julie is an exceptional dispatcher with great customer service, I certainly can attest to that. Skills and ability to provide the public with services they need, she is one of the top trainers and takes that responsibility very serious. She goes above and beyond in order to make sure that newest dispatchers do not only have the same wealth of knowledge as experienced dispatchers, but also appreciative, appreciative understanding of first responders. Julie continues to show care for those agencies she dispatches for, as well as other cities she is dispatching to. These traits set Julie apart from others and shows why she is very deserving of employee of the month. Julie, please come up front.
She's right behind you. There she is.
Thank you.
Could we have everyone in Julie's family stand up? I think that's great, let us see those beautiful children. Item number eight, discuss and consider refusal of quick claim deeds on properties located 1207 East Ninth Street and 702 West Main Street, deeded to the City of Shawnee by an individual. Mr. Erickson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commission members. As you will note in your packet, staff does recommend rejection of the property that was deeded to the City of Shawnee on February 11th, 2014. As indicated in the brief memorandum, an individual purchased this property at a tax sale, and there were two properties ever purchased. Each of them had nuisance abatement liens that were placed on them by the city in the previous years, both of which were for demolition activities. For whatever reason, the individual did not apparently do their due diligence, and after they purchased the property, regretted purchasing the property and chose to deed those to the city. And they were subsequently recorded at the county courthouse. And we do not want the property. We have no need for it. And so, staff does recommend rejection of this. I know the city attorney has spoken to the county attorney, and they're working to devise a system at the recording office where things like this don't occur in the future. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Didn't A.C.A.D.S. Watts want us to forgive those liens?
I believe that was a different individual, sir.
Not him? I know we have had some.
We have had some.
Yeah, but I didn't know. I thought one of them.
Is the property very unattractive and gonna be on the?
It's not worth $5,000.
I know, but is it gonna be, are we gonna, I'm not saying it's worth it, I'm just saying is it one of those things that's gonna have to be?
What I anticipate is, I anticipate that the city will probably end up mowing the property, probably through the summer. And most of the properties do sell, and the county's obligated by law to get a certain percentage of the liens that are placed. So, you know, there may be an opportunity. A likely scenario on properties like this is for a neighboring property owner to buy it, just to ensure that something's not developed next to them, or to incorporate that into their yard, or allow room for an expansion of some sort. So, hopefully, one or both of these will sell at the next, at the next sale that the county does, but unfortunately, don't, can't guarantee that.
Any other questions? Okay, Chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
I'll make a motion. We go with what the staff recommends on refusal.
Refusal of the quick claim deed, okay? We have a motion by Commissioner Smith and a second by Commissioner Hall. Motion carries. Item number nine. This is a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 3720 North Bryan from R1 Single Family Residential to RE Residential Estates District. Did I skip something? Case number PO514, applicant Janice Purcell. Justin?
Thank you. This property probably looks very familiar, because it was actually just rezoned on January 8th, 2014, by the city commission from agricultural to R1 Single Family Residential. At that time, when staff met with the applicants, there was some confusion as to the exact configuration of the property and what was contemplated to be built there. And after the rezone, as billing plans came in and we had a better idea of exactly what was, what the configurations of the lot were, we realized that staff made some assumptions that were incorrect. And so, we asked the applicant if they would, if they would, so we met with the applicant and they agreed to pursue a downzoning on the property to rural estates. And because of the confusion, we did not charge them for this rezone application. I just wanted to mention that, that there were no additional fees charged to the applicant. But if approved, this would rezone the property from R1 to RE. RE is a semi-rural designation that recognizes that the property is better suited for that designation, because it doesn't have public utilities readily available, and the proposed lot sizes are large and semi-rural in nature. So, with that, the planning commission did recommend approval unanimously on March 5th, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
So, the staff recommendation is to approve as well?
Yes, sir. Okay. Okay, this being a public hearing then, I am going to open our public hearing, and for anyone that would like to speak in favor of this matter or against this matter, please come forward. The same rules abide of three minutes, but we welcome your input if you, anyone wants to. Okay, no comments coming from that, then I will close the public hearing. The Chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
So, Justin, how many total acres is this? Just six acres, is that the?
It is, yes, sir, six acres. And there'd be two residences on that six acres.
I move we accept staff's recommendation.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Harry.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Winteringer. Read the title, please.
This is an ordinance concerning zoning classification of the following described real property located within the corporate limits of the City of Shawnee, Potawatomi County, Oklahoma. It is in the northeast corner, the north, I'm sorry. It is in the southeast quarter of Section 5, Township 10 North, Range 4 East.
That it?
That's it.
Okay.
Unless you want me to read all those meats and vans?
We have a motion and a second, it's been read, I guess it's time for us to vote. Motion carries. Item number 10 is a public hearing in consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 8 and 12 East MacArthur from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to C3 Automotive, Commercial, and Recreational District, case PO3-14. Applicant is James T. Kerr. Again, Mr. Erickson?
Thank you. The proposal would rezone the subject property from C1, which is an office commercial designation, to C3, which is a more heavy, intensive commercial designation. The property is about 1.35 acres in size, and the proposed use is a emergency medical clinic. It is located at the northwest corner of MacArthur and Bell Street. The planning commission held a public hearing and heard this request on March 5th, 2014, and unanimously recommended approval of the rezone. We have not received any written comments in opposition to the request. The applicant will also have to plat the property, and that will be on the planning commission's next agenda, and so the city commission will see that next month as well. So, there's additional development applications that will be submitted. This property was actually the site of a rezone that was approved back in 2007. And as we provided the public notice and processed this application, we had some questions about that from, from some of the neighboring properties, and who thought that the property was already rezoned C3. And in fact, in 2007, a rezone application was submitted that asked to rezone this property, which at that time was residential, to the C3 commercial zoning designation. However, the legal description and the ordinance that was ultimately passed is in error, and so there was not a complete, there was not a full completion of that request. And however, reviewing the minutes, I do believe that at the time, it was the intent to rezone this property C3 at that time. But given the confusion, we did have to go forward with this full request before you this evening. And with that, staff is in concurrence with the planning commission's recommendation and does recommend approval. Any questions?
Is there a street easement down the middle of that?
There is actually a utility easement through that, sir.
A what?
And there's, there's.
Over down the middle of it?
Yes. And that will be better indicated next month when you, when you, when you have the plat in front of you, but there'll be some reconfiguration of the existing utility line that traverses the property.
Any other questions or just? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, at this time, I'll open a public hearing in this matter, taking comment from anyone here for or against this matter. Come ahead, sir. If you would state your name and sign in there and speak right into that microphone so the people on TV can hear you.
I'm Terry Kerr, and Lou James Kerr, architect for the project. Be glad to answer any questions.
It's an emergency medical thing?
Yes, sir.
So, are there, is there gonna be a lot of ambulances coming through there at all hours?
No.
It's gonna be 24/7 or?
It's better worded as urgent care. It's intended to be either by appointment or something happens in uni, they're really not set up for true emergency room services. They're open 8 to 8, six days a week, and then 1 to 7 on Sunday.
That's great. Any other questions, I mean? Thank you very much. But now you can, I'm not there yet, hang on. I gotta click, we're in a public hearing. Would there be anyone else that would like to speak in this matter, either for or against it? Okay? Not seeing anyone come forward, then I will close the public hearing. Okay? Now, you wanna make that again?
No. Motion to approve.
Second, Commissioner Hall. We have a second by Commissioner Smith. Would you read the title, please, ma'am?
This, this is an ordinance rezoning a portion of the Block 2 of Wyatt's First Edition from C1 Neighborhood Commercial, Neighborhood District to C3 Automotive, Commercial, and Recreational District, known as 8 and 12 East MacArthur.
Okay, then it's time to vote. We have a motion, a second, so let's vote. Motion carries. Wow. Item number 11, it's another public hearing in consideration of approval of a conditional use permit in C4 zoning located at 6 West Main. Applicant Rob in Misty Hardison. Justin, could you come forward at this time? Justin, could you come forward at this time?
It's a busy agenda at the last Planning Commission meeting. This case was also heard on March 5th, 2014. And the applicant requests approval of a conditional use permit to be able to serve alcoholic beverages as a secondary use on a piece of property that's zone C4 and located at 6 West Main Street in downtown Shawnee. The primary use of the building and the business activity would be an art gallery and they want the option to be able to have events there that, in conjunction with the art events that, where they can also serve alcoholic beverages. The Planning Commission voted 5 to 1 to recommend approval of the conditional use permit. Staff had one recommended condition. The one recommended condition from staff was that the sale of alcohol shall not constitute the main purpose of the business so that it was clear that that is a secondary use and that it is not something else such as a bar. In discussions with the Planning Commission at the meeting, they elected to add a second condition, which reads the conditional use permit shall be non-transferable. And so, that it is running with the applicant. And if they chose to discontinue that use in the future or sell the business, then a new owner would have to come in and get the required permit. And staff has no objection to that second condition. So, staff does recommend approval of the requested conditional use permit and does recommend adoption of the two Planning Commission conditions. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
I guess there are no questions, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. At this time, I will open the public hearing. If anyone likes to speak in favor of this or against it. Please state your name and sign in for us, sir.
Dale Curbs. We had a few more concerns on this number 11, on the conditional use. The staff did do their due diligence on that. I'm speaking on behalf of the Downtown Merchants. It's a group, many of you have been in those meetings. Our concerns on this conditional use permit, we understand the intention is for a wine and palate, which I think we're in agreeance, we're fine with the wine aspect. Our concern is full-fledged alcohol. We also like that the staff has put in that the transfer and also the sale. But will that also include lease of property? That was a question. If the Rob and Misty Hardison decide to lease out that property, at what point do we make the decision that alcohol has become a primary instead of a secondary? So, that's what we're, our questions and our concerns are as Downtown Merchants. We're not interested in a bar. We have one and it's a problem already, so.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak in this matter? What we've got, okay. She was up first, then you can be next. Thank you.
I'm Teresa Cody with Uncommon Threads, and I just want to say I agree with Dale that we want to make sure it's just not a full-fledged bar in any conditions that you can put on them to see that that doesn't happen because there's so many things happen with the existing bar that the city has had no control over. Appreciate it.
Young lady, you're next.
I'm Amy Friend. I've lived in Shawnee for three years and as a resident of Shawnee and someone that has attended a wine and palate, I would like to speak in defense of what Rob and Misty Hardison are trying to do. I attend Frontline Church, which is on Main Street as well, and I know that they received a lot of flack from the downtown businesses as well, you know, with rumors that it was going to be a soup kitchen. And I would like to say that I think Frontline has really become a highlight of downtown Shawnee and I believe that this wine and palate can do the same thing. I think that any assumption that this is going to be a bar is a misunderstanding and that the primary use of this business is to be able to come and paint a painting with your mother, your grandmother, your boyfriend, your husband, and maybe even your children. I know that Rob and Misty have talked about maybe doing children's classes where there will be no alcohol served and not even visible in the establishment. I think that their goal is to provide another source of entertainment as well as adding to the efforts to liven up downtown with the arts such as First Friday and all the other art galleries that have popped up down there. So, I just wanted to offer my insight.
Did you sign in there?
Nope, but I...
Please take your time and sign in. Okay. I would like to, anybody else like to speak? If not, I'll close this public hearing. But I would like to, Justin, could you come back and give us some enlightenment on this? I thought that was kind of an interesting way, the lease, could that be added to it, not only if they sold it, but if they leased it to someone else?
I agree that the condition is somewhat vague and I certainly don't have an objection to, commission wanted to adjust it. You could simply have the words, "shall be non-transferable in the case of sale or lease." And that would...
Mary Ann, can you?
Yes, and it's not, this does not let me a bar, as Justice said. It's only, it's very limiting.
So, how do you, Justin, how do you monitor, police, whatever the right word is, the primary sales versus secondary sales aspect? You know, alcohol's not the primary sale. How do we know?
That's a good question. I think if we had concerns, then we would reach out to the owners and ask them to provide data showing that the, that sale activity was less than 50% of the business. Now, in the areas, in the state of Oklahoma, if establishments serves alcohol and it's within 300 feet of a church or a school, it has to, by law, cannot exceed that same threshold and it has to prove that to the Able Commission. There's no requirement here because it is actually in excess of 300 feet from any churches downtown.
But what about the hours of operation? Is there any restrictions on hours of operation?
There was none that were, that the Planning Commission deemed necessary.
I'm not saying that there needs to be, I'm just, you know, it's a question. I guess, does there need to be or is that something that...
We can certainly, that can certainly be added. What was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting is the fact that there is a dance studio that's directly adjacent and really the same building, but immediately adjacent to the west of this use and that the applicant would be able to kind of stagger their times if there was a concern with alcohol sales and younger dance participants.
So, if we approve it with this one minor modification and a year from now comes a problem, then we have recourse, we can come in and ask questions or is it, you know?
There's not a renewal process, but a conditional use permit can be revoked for...
Okay, now say that again. A conditional can be revoked?
Yes.
Okay, is this a conditional?
Yes, sir. It is conditional. And so, what makes it conditional is it's approved, subject to the conditions that you place upon it.
Okay.
Is there a difference between a beer and wine license and an alcohol beverage license?
There is, there's, it's a separate license, beer and wine, and then there's what's called a mixed beverage license. And there's a licensure requirement at both the city and the state level.
And they're applying for a mixed beverage license?
It's my understanding that they would prefer to have the option of both beer and wine and a mixed beverage. Yes, ma'am.
I'm a little vague on when you say can't exceed more than percent. What's the percent and how are we going to, how are we going to regulate that? Are they supposed to make, like, show us their books or something like that, a report on a regulation?
I think if it became an issue, we'd be within our right to ask that. I think that that is going to be highly unlikely, but...
Let me interrupt here. The police can do it as a condition of the license. They can come in at any time that it's open. They can observe, they can ask for the books because the beer and wine license by itself allows enforcement possibilities. Code enforcement could come in and look. So, it's manageable and it would get pretty obvious in this instance.
Right. We would only need to take, if it becomes a problem, that's the only time. It could be a real nice first-class operation and really, you know, a nice value add for the city. I just was asking a few questions in case it did get out of control, what's our recourse? And you answered that, we could revoke the conditional use permit.
So, at any time, the commission, if it becomes a problem, we can revoke that?
Yeah.
Is what I'm hearing. Okay. Any other questions of Justin? Thank you, sir. Thank you. I've closed the public hearing. We've had some additional discussion. The Chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
I move we approve with the addition of the two words, "or lease," as Justin pointed out to the motion.
Second. You have a motion by Commissioner Hall. We have a second by Commissioner Smith. Can you read that with all those fancy additions?
I'll try. This is an ordinance concerning zoning classification of 6 West Main, which is Lot 12, Lot 24, amended plat to the city of Shawnee, from C4 Central Business to C, I'm sorry, to C4 Cap Central Business District with conditional use permit. That does not look right to me. Is that right? C4P, not C4 Cap, to C4P Central Business District with a conditional use permit.
Okay, then it's time to vote.
We have a motorcycle shop selling berries over there.
Motion carries. Item number 12 is consideration of approval of a final plat for North Harrison Street Business Park located at Harrison and Wolverine Road, case SO2-14. Applicant Red Bud Development LLC. Mr. Erickson's?
This proposed final plat would divide 18.19 acres into five industrially zoned lots. The property was previously rezoned in October 2012. Preliminary plat was approved shortly thereafter. The property is a little unique in that approximately 40 to 50% of it is occupied by a regulated flood plan. And so, if you look at the site plan or the final plat in your packet, you'll note that large swath through the, roughly the middle of the property. And so, there will be three lots that have frontage upon Wolverine Road and two along North Harrison. The applicant intends to develop the property, partially develop the property, retain one lot for use as a storage facility, and then the other lots would be available for purchase. The Planning Commission heard this case on March 5th, 2014, and unanimously recommended approval, subject to the nine conditions that are listed in your packet. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
James, you're our map detail guy.
We, one of those conditions is the sidewalk. Is that, do they qualify for that or they pay into that? Do we need a sidewalk out there?
I don't think we necessarily do. The way that ordinance is written, though, is that it does, it is at the discretion of the property owner. So, if they would like to...
Pay in instead of build a sidewalk?
Pay in and that's certainly available to them and, but if they...
If they don't pay, if they elect to build it, they just build the sidewalk.
Then they do.
It's out there in the middle of nowhere.
Right.
I understand, but it's got to start somewhere.
We just, on that, not doing the sidewalk, are we doing that at a car?
It's not our choice, it's their choice.
I know, but could we make it, I mean, so that it'd be a little bit cheaper for them to pay in lieu of, instead of for a sidewalk that, I mean, that was far out there and everything. Because we need the sidewalks in town and that of them.
Well, we'd have to change our code, wouldn't we?
The applicant is here and so you may address that question to...
Yeah, can we ask them if they're going to pay him?
Any other questions of Justin? This is not a public hearing, but I would like, do you want to ask that question?
I'm not going to say, I'll vote yes if they say yes.
Well, I just encourage him to try to do that if we can work a deal out so we could replace some of those sidewalks in town instead of...
Who's the applicant?
Red Bud.
Red Bud.
I'm Rich Landy, Landy Sanctuary.
Yeah. For Jenny. Have you had, do you have any ideas on the sidewalk, what you decided on that? Have you just been in decisions on that yet?
Right now, the people from Eaton Axle are walking down that area for smoking.
Oh, they are? Oh, they are? Okay.
I'm sorry.
You asked the question.
They fall and break their ankles.
Yes. Right now, the way the fees are done, we get bids and whatever the bid that we could get built for is what the city's fees are.
Well, first, people using it, then I wouldn't...
There's very, I do not anticipate a lot of use. I would like to, as an engineer and being in this community for some period, I think it's an excellent idea to try to give a reduction because we are, as design engineers, doing sidewalks, I'm sorry, to nowhere. And I think that would be worth consideration for the board. It does deter some development. This is an industrial area. Eaton Axle's directly north and so without in the industrial area, I built when we had the oil activity that came in several years ago, we built 100 feet because it's required. I agree with you in the comments that we have many areas in town we could use the sidewalks if there was somewhat of an advantage. This project came to, started in 2012. There seems to be quite a need for small I-2 type shops and looking around, there's very few or none available. I think this will serve very well in that attribute. It has been delayed in going to this point because about 40% plus is flood zone, based on the flood zone maps. We did investigate it over that period of time to evaluate, to eventually look at it. The fee, just the engineering and dealing with FEMA, was over $60,000 just to evaluate if you want to go through that expense. Development-wise, again, if you look at economic development, it is definitely a cost consideration. So, again, it was delayed for a period of time to look at those features. We tried to design around it. We've also included the stormwater detention, so not to add any to it. When you look at it and the development of it, the bridge that is existing is already substandard and so it makes a dam because it can't pass and so it does have a problem going through. The doctor couldn't afford to put the bridge in. So, when we look at those items, then that's kind of where we are. We will be putting a 12-inch line, importance was standard, down Wolverine to go back to that back portion, which will open up hopefully additional areas in the water system expansion program. I think it will be a good project, again, from my view, 30 years plus here, we do have a need for the I-2 type facilities available. I'd be glad to answer any further questions, but it has been delayed primarily to deal with the, again, our view of it was a minimum of 40% was inundated or shown on the FEMA maps.
Okay. Thank you.
If, in that area, does that mean you can't build in there or you can't, or if you build that up, you have to go through the FEMA and everything else?
You have to go through FEMA. And so, what is designated, we go through, we determine what that elevation is. If it is not a studied area, we have to try to find out what it is or comply in an AE zone. The maps are almost shown on an elevation bottom out. We try to come up with that evaluation and then we're still going to, we still have to elevate all facilities at least 18 inches to 2 feet.
Now...
Hold that elevation. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Well, we have a staff report vested with the engineering firm. The chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
What were the conditions on that? Were there some commission conditions?
There's nine.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. On that, was it those nine conditions included in your recommendation?
It's in the...
Yes, sir. They are in the... And then in the cover sheet to the commission from the planning commission.
Okay. Well, I'd move approve a plat with my nine conditions that's recommended by the planning commission.
We have a motion by Commissioner Ice Mayer here.
Second.
We have... Okay. Ladies first. Okay. Commissioner Agie seconded. Okay. It's time to vote then. Motion carries. Okay. Item number 13 is a public hearing and consideration of approval of a planned unit development located at the southwest quarter of I-40 and Kickapoo Street in C3 zoning for commercial use, case PO-4-14, applicant Kates Clark and Associates LLP.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission members, this proposal is a substantial commercial development on North Kickapoo, immediately south of Interstate 40. The developer is Hunt Properties from Dallas, Texas, and the property consists of 42 acres in total, with Phase 1 being around 19 and 1/2 acres. And as shown, approximately 144,000-plus square feet of commercial retail and restaurant development is planned and could be physically situated on this first phase of 19.4 acres. A total of nine lots are proposed, with seven lots developed as part of the first phase. Property is currently zone C3, and they are requesting a planned unit development to... For the reason that this is a large commercial development that is designed to be in multiple phases and to have consistent development throughout. And so staff believe, and talking with the applicant, that the PUD process would be the best route to go in order to accomplish those goals. You're all quite familiar with the property. I know the staff report is quite lengthy. It includes drawings of aerial photographs to get you specifically situated as to the first phase.
Jason, now, inside that red line, I'm looking at the...
Yes, sir.
I guess aerial view of it. All that inside that red line is what we're talking about, not just the yellow parts?
The yellow part is Phase 1, and then the entire red line area is Phase... Is the both phases.
So that's a total of 40 some acres?
Yes, sir.
42, you said, yeah.
The planning commission on March 5, 2014, did unanimously recommend approval of this planned unit development. I should say as well that my summary of the staff report addresses both agenda items number 13 and number 14. So it is a combined staff report. The... In terms of the planned unit development, that process does allow for some flexibility in the code, and those situations where flexibility has been granted or asked for, spelled out on pages five of the staff report primarily. The staff report also sought to address some of the concerns that were to be anticipated by the planning commission, things such as traffic and circulation. Hopefully, you saw that in the report, summarized the findings of the traffic study that the city... That was conducted on behalf of the city. And numerous traffic improvements are contemplated and mandated by the conditions herein. And also looked at any other neighborhood impacts to adjacent residential property, to the south in particular. And after full consideration of those, staff made a series of findings. They're on page seven of the report, and a lengthy set of conditions on pages seven through nine. And the staff does... Is in concurrence with the planning commission recommendation, does recommend approval of the planned unit development and the preliminary plat for the Shawnee Marketplace project. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Is there a sidewalk on Kickapoo? Is that a requirement on that? It's already there?
There is an existing...
Is it something?
Yes, sir. There is an existing sidewalk on Kickapoo. What we've asked the developer to do is, as those pad sites develop adjacent to Kickapoo, that there be a short sidewalk connection. And then we've also, as they develop the actual construction plans, there will be an internal sidewalk network too, so that somebody can traverse from Kickapoo through the development safely.
Is the street from 45th in there? I... My iPad's not working. I can't really tell.
The street for 45th Street specifically, there are no required improvements on 45th with Phase 1 development. With Phase 2, the signalization will be required at the intersection of the new access road and 8-a-lot. For Phase 1, some of the improvements that will be done relative to traffic and roadways is there will be an internal access drive that will serve the pad sites on Kickapoo. And so there will be no additional curb cuts on the Kickapoo Street. 46th Street, which is the street immediately north of CVS, will be extended west and then tie into that network as those sites are developed incrementally. And then a new traffic signal and will coincide with the... Will ultimately be the kind of the primary entryway is when the site fully develops, which is south of Delta Cafe. There's an existing drive on the east side. They're just south of the Popeyes Restaurant. And so if you just think of that same driveway towards the... On the west side, there will be a driveway there and access road that will be signalized with Phase 1. And then some additional improvements to the existing drive north of there that already has a signal. So we recognize that traffic's a concern today and we did what we believe a good job of putting conditions in here that will provide for a safe environment for the public.
Any other questions of Justin? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
For that good report. At this time, we'll open our public hearing. If anyone would like to speak in favor of this or against this, please come forward with this matter. No one looking to me like wanting to stand up out of their chair, then I will close this public hearing. And having that being closed, the chair will entertain a motion in this matter.
I'll ask John and Justin, are we sure we got everything in here? We need to get this thing moving?
Let's just speak a little bit about the process. So this is the planned unit development. The next agenda item is the preliminary plat. Then the applicant will complete construction drawings and submit those with the final plat. So in those detailed... There's a lot of detail that is understandably missing at this level of approval. And so we've had... Since the planning commission meeting alone, we've had numerous conversations and emails with the applicant and his engineer and working through those design issues. So you will know a lot more about this. And staff will know a lot more about the detailed engineering of this project in the next 30 or 60 days. And so that final plat will be back before you.
I just want to make sure that we've got everything in there we need to. And I don't want this to come up later that we've left something out or something like that.
Sure, I understand that. And that's... We agree.
Which... What are we working on now?
Still working on 13.
I'd move we adopt the... What are we... Is it the plan or the...
It's an ordinance for the planned unit development.
Okay. Plus, with the conditions as described by staff and the planning commission.
Okay, we have a motion by Vice Mayor here. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Commissioner Hall, would you read the title?
This is an ordinance concerning zoning classification of properties located at the southwest corner of I-40 and Kickapoo Street from C3 to planned unit development and amending the official zoning map of the City accordingly.
It's time to vote, ladies and gentlemen. Motion carries. That's item number 13. I'll read item number 14. I don't know. Justin pretty much covered it probably, but anyway. Consideration of a preliminary plat for the Shawnee Marketplace planned unit development at the southwest quarter of I-40 and Kickapoo Street, case SO-1-14, applicant Kates Clark and Associates LLP. Do we need to hear from Justin in this matter, or he kind of covered it? Okay.
I'd move we adopt the preliminary plat. And if there's any conditions on it, then I'd be added to.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor here. And a second by Commissioner Smith. Motion carries. Item number 15 is discussion, consideration, and possible action on an ordinance repealing and amending portions of Chapter 8 of the Shawnee Municipal Code dealing with businesses, permits, and license.
Your Honor, we need to pull that item. We had some technical challenges today from AT&amp;T that made it impossible for IT to... They could not overcome. And so I didn't realize until I was able to call this up this evening that somehow the paperwork from item 15 didn't get onto the agenda. So we'll just bring that back next time, and let's go to 16, which had a similar problem in that the memo did not get into the agenda. And I've given it to the press and then handed out a copy to you, even though you've all seen the memo, because this is the one I gave you in advance so that you could look it over. Chapter 2 is administration, and it's just kind of the nuts and bolts of how you run your meetings and buy and sell things and do some supervision and all that. So most of these are housekeeping amendments, but some of them are substantive and you'll want to discover, really to discuss them. Section 2-1 definitions didn't have any definitions, so we're just going to take that out. Section 2-2 defines the city's seal. We cannot trademark our city's seal. There's been a recent federal court decision that says we do not have any right to copyright it or trademark it. So we're going to amend that ordinance to make it an offense for someone to use the city's seal and insignia to imply support or sanctioning by the city or to mislead someone into believing that. One of the most significant changes that we're suggesting to you is Section 2.5, which involves the sale of real property. This is a pretty standard provision that you have now, which says you can sell at the public auction or by sealed bids. And it just pretty much tells you to give a notice and take the bids. The problem... That's all right if you're selling a lot that we took back for a lien, you know, and it's 25 by 110 feet. But the city now owns two substantial and valuable pieces of property. One of them is the land far northwest that was purchased for park purposes, and the other is the land that was acquired as a possible CVB visitor center. I don't know that you would ever sell it. But in the event you did, public auction and sealed bids might not be the best way for you to get the best return on that investment. So I've looked at state law, particularly in the school land commission, and come up with some suggestions for you. One would be to continue to go ahead and keep the public auction or sealed bid, so you have that option. But another one would require that you get a sealed... Get an appraisal, keep it sealed, so it's confidential. Put it on the market. Leave it on the market at least 15 days. You wouldn't have to use a Realtor. You may want to put in here that you won't use a Realtor. Most cities do not use one or do not pay the commission. If they do, they may list it, and the purchaser pays all the commission so that the city gets its full value. Then, whenever you get an offer, someone checks it against the appraisal. If it isn't 80 percent of the appraisal, you don't sell it. Or a supermajority could sell it if you wanted to do that. But it's an attempt to give you more of a real-world kind of an option and at the same time protect the taxpayers to be sure that the money comes in and that you are able to get the best price, but that it's not, you know, some kind of a handshake deal that somebody else makes somewhere. So I think you probably want to discuss that. And if you want to discuss it now, I'll stop talking and y'all can talk. I'll do that.
I have a couple of questions. If we put it on the market and we don't pay commission, how do we actually market it? We market it ourselves? We advertise it ourselves?
The buyer usually ends up paying.
You could do it, or you can list it with the Realtor, but just the listing says the buyer pays the full commission.
Okay. The...
Talking at mic, so that I can hear you. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's fine. I think the... I like having the option to do this, you know, put it on the market. I think that the 15-day on-the-market minimum is a little bit too short. I would rather see 30 or 45 days if we're going to put it on the market. I just think 15 days would be too short for a minimum. You know, to make sure that it was advertised properly or something like that. It's just not enough time for people to see it and react.
What was the purpose of the competitive bidding anyhow? The sealed bid?
Originally?
Originally, yeah.
It's just that you don't sell things. That was an attempt to get the best price. And again, you know, that's how we sell most things, except over time, we've started using alternate disposal methods. We use eBay, for example, if we need to. It's just kind of an old way of doing things, but it was at a time when cities didn't generally own very much property other than the odd lot, for example. So...
Yeah, I think...
Or they knew they had a very valuable piece of property that an auction or a sealed bid would get it up.
I think having this as an option is... Would be really good to have. It's an option, right? But I just want to make sure that the requirements around that are protect us.
Are you saying you could still advertise it and use a sealed bid method?
Sure. You could auction it, you could use sealed bids, or you could list it. Give you three ways to go.
Now, that 80 percent you was talking about, that king, is that what the CLO uses?
School Land Commission or Office...
Yeah.
Commissioners Land Office, but what most of it's still called School Land Commission. That's what they did, 80 percent.
80 percent.
Do they have an open market process, or is there's all competitive or sealed bid?
Pardon? They do not market it. They take sealed bids. But they hardly ever sell anything. They mostly take sealed... In fact, I don't know that they sell. They swap. Or they... For leases, they take sealed bids. And again, leases, it's a different kettle of fish.
And there's no clear-cut state statute that prohibits the city from doing this? Obviously, I'm sure you've checked that out.
There is no statute that prohibits us from doing it this way.
They have a Competitive Bidding Act of 1974 or something, but that's construction.
That's for construction.
Okay.
And other cities use this method for exactly the reasons we've discussed here. Things have just changed.
Has there been any feedback from some of those cities as to whether they actually feel like they get more money or that through this process?
Two places. I was city attorney. We absolutely were sure we got more money.
Okay.
And that's the intent here, commissioners, is we think this option, to put it on your agenda, change this code, allows us to be able to market the property and get more money for it. We own a piece of property now that if we decide not to do anything with but sell it, it's worth almost a million dollars now. You know, taking sealed bids is just an old way of doing it. We think we could probably find somebody who could market it for us, somebody who wants that piece of property in that area, and would be willing to pay more value for it with that option. But you always have the other option.
So... So I like the idea of not paying commission. The buyer pays the commission. I think that we ought to make it a 45-day minimum if we're going to advertise it.
Lay start it.
Yeah, I would even say 45 days.
That's fine.
You know, to give people time, you know, 45 days on that. The 80 percent is fine. I don't think that that's a problem, especially if the buyer's going to be paying, whatever, 6 or 7 percent commission.
And all the other rules, I guess, regarding the sale of public property to a private individual are the same. This is just the process that you use to market it.
This is the process. You still could not sell it to James. Sorry, James. Or to me. No, you'd still... It would still have to be an arms-length transaction. One other question then. Do you want to be able to sell it for less than 80 percent with the supermajority? Okay.
No.
Yeah, I think we hold on to it if we can't get 80 percent. I think we hold on to it if we can't get 80 percent.
Does the city pay for the appraisal, I guess?
The city would pay for the appraisal. And I think we probably want to make it a licensed appraisal.
It has to be a licensed appraisal. No question asked.
Okay. Are you ready to move on?
Sure.
The next one is two thirty-two, and that kind of clarifies the agenda prep. Right now, get to it here. Right now, one commissioner can place it on the agenda, and then it has the city clerk do the agenda and so forth. Well, really, the way it works is the manager's office prepares the draft agenda, and then the final agenda preparation and posting's done by the clerk. So we wanted to clean that language up. There had been an issue that kind of came up internally, whether one commissioner should be able to put it on the agenda as it is, or whether it should be two. I got some feedback from several of you that you wanted two. So what do you want, one or two or three? I mean, whatever. You don't want any more?
Would that depend on which two we're talking about?
I know.
First question is, is the mayor is considered in it for this purpose?
For this purpose, a commissioner.
Commissioner. All right. So we're equal for this purpose.
What, what brought this about? Have we had a problem?
I just had some questions about it and wanted to know about changing it, so I just put it up here.
I've had, not lately, but probably a year or so ago, was asked about it, and I don't remember what the situation was, but anyhow. Is it still going to be where if an item, if you vote in the majority that an item, and you, can you still put it back on the agenda? Is that?
Motion for reconsideration, yes. If you voted in the majority, you can put it on at the next meeting. If you were on the losing side, you can't put it back on. Only someone on the prevailing side can put it back on, on a motion for reconsideration.
That's still.
That's still in there.
How would that process work? I mean, would one commissioner have to contact every commissioner until they found somebody willing to agree with them?
Well, that's kind of the problem. That is, that is a part of the problem of it, and that's why you certainly don't want more than two, because then you've shopped it. But I, most of the time, I would think anyone that asks you, either your fellow commissioners, you do the courtesy of agreeing to it, because you may want something on the agenda someday, and that's as fresh a matter of how it would, would have to work. But again, this is entirely your, your management. I can argue this one. Absolutely, it's my lawyer and me. I can argue this one both ways. Sometimes having two saves you from having someone who has a bone to pick, and it just keeps coming up. On the other hand, if it's just one, there are ways to solve that problem when it comes back up. Mayor calls the item, somebody makes a motion to continue. That's not debatable. You vote, you continue it, and you don't have to keep discussing it. And I have seen it operate that way in communities where somebody just couldn't let go of a bone. So, these are manageable either way.
One of the concerns that I have about this is that even though we're elected by the city at large, you know, we represent our ward constituents, and we may have a constituent that wants us to bring something for discussion to the city commission, and may have, I may have the background and information on that, but I haven't been in a position to be able to share that with all the commissioners, so I may want to put it on the agenda. It may or may not be important to the others, or it may be something that's brought up at a time when there's not enough time before the agenda is finalized to find somebody and coordinate that. So it adds kind of like an extra layer of bureaucracy to the process, and I think that it almost makes it appear that a commissioner has to have the permission of another commissioner to address something that they and their constituents and their ward feel is important, and that's my main concern about this.
So, I want to go back to something here on if something is voted down, it can't be brought back on the agenda for a period of time.
It can't be brought back on a motion to reconsider. This is one of those places where this older ordinance and the Robert Searls of order can kind of fly in the, in the face of, for example, the open meeting law in terms of the power to control your agenda and to come back and keep things in public. But that's, that's an ordinance you have. It's, it's a way, again, it's a way to keep from having to vote on the same thing, because it also, that's also the possibility of, of issues regarding who's present to vote, you know, okay, well, I'll bring it back next time.
Well, and that's what I was going to say, is if, if there's no vote taken, if something's on the agenda, but there's no motion, no vote, then it could be put back on the same. The commissioner can add it every, every week or every two weeks to the.
And it could be then continued every two weeks.
So, I'm thinking it's, it's, it's the reoccurring things that we would want to stop necessarily, not the first time. I don't know how, you see what I'm getting at?
I see what you're saying, and, and again, that's controllable by, you talk about it a time or two, and after that, if the commission does not want to talk about it, you just immediately, somebody makes a motion to table or to continue. It's not debatable, and it goes. If, if that passes, then you don't talk about it that week, and if it's up two weeks later, you just keep doing it.
So if that's the case, then this is not even needed.
Like I say.
It has to be the next, it has to be the next agenda.
Well, but now you're talking about a motion to reconsider. It does have to be the next agenda.
A motion to reconsider has to be the next agenda.
I'm just saying that if it's put on the agenda, then somebody, if it's, it's something that people don't want to talk about or whatever, they make the, the motion to table that line item, whatever it is.
My own opinion, this is not particularly broken, just as a matter of observation, not only this commission.
Well, for me, I'd like to just leave it like it is.
Okay. Is that kind of the consensus? All right. We'll just, we'll leave that part just like it is. Sections two thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-six, I've just tried to modernize those, so it's no, for example, so that you don't have to rise to speak. We don't read the minutes out loud. I mean, these are things for a long time. Have tried to address modern technology. You don't need to be texting, emailing, telephoning, or privately communicating with other people during the meeting.
John, no English there.
Get off the phone, John. Don't talk English. The other one is if you leave the room during an item, in return, you should not vote. There's the appearance of impropriety there and the concern about having been otherwise influenced. Ask for a break. Take a quick recess if you need to step out. Our ordinances not only provide that, that you can recu, that you can abstain, which is essentially a recusal, but you can.
Abstain from what?
A recusal. But you also have a provision in here for, as a commissioner, you can just ask for no reason to be excused. I'd like to be excused from voting on this item. However, if you've been excused or if you've announced your intent to recuse yourself, you not only shouldn't vote, you shouldn't talk. So I've put that in there. So those are those housekeeping and maybe quasi-substantive changes. Any comments about that?
You could still abstain, right?
Yes.
If you don't recuse yourself, but you can abstain and still.
If you're going to abstain, you really shouldn't participate in the discussion.
Should recuse, but what is it, abstain? I mean, is, recuse is not a, if you.
Abstention is what you end up doing when you recuse yourself, basically. That's how your vote shows up, is that you abstain.
That's what I was going to ask. How does it show up?
You abstain as a vote, but the recusal should go to the discussion and deliberation.
So if you're planning on abstaining.
You need to say upfront.
You need to not say upfront and not do any discussion on the matter. I guess that's kind of a simple way to say it.
I didn't see in here where you can't check the thunder scores.
That is not in there. You can check the thunder score.
Oh, you, oh, you score. Not always.
The better way, the better way is have some staff member assigned to that and have them periodically.
What if you don't know whether you're going to abstain or not until after some discussion has already been had?
You'd hope you read the agenda enough to know that you didn't want to.
Yeah, if you're going to abstain, it should be because you have some feeling that, that for whatever reason, you cannot be fair. And one way or the other, you're just concerned about it. You're concerned about how it looks. An abstention is not to be used, if you absolutely cannot vote on it because you have a financial interest, nobody can vote on it. Nobody can vote on it. It has to come off. So we can't.
What, what, you mean, you mean, you mean, you mean nobody on the commission can vote on it if one person has a financial interest?
Yes, and here's why. You need to rent a U-Haul. So he says, I recuse myself, and the rest of you rent a U-Haul from Steve. Then you need to have something catered, and John says, I recuse myself, so you have the Sonic cater it. You see?
You're driving the business towards one person.
You can't, you can't recuse yourself and let your buddies take care of you.
Why, you really do have to rent a U-Haul.
Yeah.
No saying anything about it.
It's a problem. It's a problem. There are some statutory exemptions about newspapers and so forth, but statutes really can't waive the Constitution. These are constitutional provisions. If anybody has an interest in the contract, the city can't do it.
Mayor and Mr. Mayor, I mean, you know, we're, we're talking about a lot of eventualities that may or may not happen. And Commissioner, you're right. I mean, you, you could have somebody up before you that turns out to be a family member that owns a piece of property that's trying to be rezoned, and you didn't know that until you got to a certain point in the public hearing that that was the case. The reason the attorney's bringing this before you is she's trying to keep you out of harm's way. If you have an issue, don't talk for discussion. Leave the room. We'll come get you. We don't want you guys to put yourself in a, in a public policy situation where you would end up publicly being liable and being sued for something. So we're just outlining things for you that probably may or may not ever happen, but most likely not. We're just giving you the options that are laid out there in the ordinance that may or may not ever happen.
Well, I think another reason for abstaining might be that you realize you don't have enough information to base a decision, and you may not realize that until the conversation is.
If that's the reason, then you need to state that at the time of the abstention, that you're not ready to vote and that you abstain. Okay, section two dash four, we currently require a three-fourth vote of those present to get into executive session, which we've always had, but it really needs to go to a simple majority and track state law, which is what the proposal is, unless you want to keep it three-fourths of those present. Up to you.
Just make it a simple majority.
No, it's up to you.
Yeah, just make it simple majority. Simple majority still rules.
Section two dash one oh seven deals with the purchases, purchases of supplies and equipment, and that's under the, the city manager's authority, I believe. Let me pull it up. At the present time, the city manager can spend up to twenty-five thousand dollars if you've got a, a budget item. If not, he can only expend up to ten without your approval. And this applies to supplies, materials, and equipment for the offices, but it doesn't mention services. And the illogical result here, well, you probably can't do anymore, but there was a time when you could have bought a pickup for under twenty-five thousand. I don't know that that can be done anymore, moped, but you wouldn't be able to have it serviced. So all we've done to that is add the word services.
So.
So if there's a line item in the budget for certain kind of services, he could do that.
But there has to be a line item in it for up, if you're going to spend more than ten thousand.
That's right.
Where you can spend up to ten thousand without a line item for services. I don't know. What do you guys think about that?
Sometimes, I mean, I go with the budget.
They can't trust in, now we're going.
So, I mean, I go with the budget as close as anybody does, and there's some items that I didn't realize were on the budget, and we've done, so. I don't know. I didn't know that, I mean, my assumption was over a certain level, anything that's on the budget had to come back before the commission to be approved.
Well, I think that's what she's saying, right?
So I'm saying, if it's not in the budget, the limit's ten thousand right now. If it's in the budget, the limit's twenty-five, and twenty-five is also the trigger point for bids, uh-huh.
So all we're really doing is adding services to existing ways.
All we're doing here is adding the word services. That's all we're doing. Is that okay?
Okay, it's okay.
So you're talking about service, you mean like electric?
Professional services.
Professional services.
Oh, okay. Thanks. Yeah.
Yeah. It'd be repairs.
Consulting.
Well, yeah, that too. But I mean, you could buy the supplies. You'd need to be able to hire somebody to do the wiring, to do the labor when we remodeled court, that kind of thing. The next one, sick leave, that's all covered in various city policies. It just doesn't need to be in here. Section one seventy-one is, has been amended to put in there the provisions that you put in my contract last time about who supervises the employees in the city attorney's office and the requirement that those employees be subject to city policies. One seventy-two, I'm sorry, that's the wrong number.
Deputy Treasurer.
Deputy Treasurer is not in one seventy-two. It's somewhere else. It, we don't have one, and we haven't had one for a long time. So that's being recommended for being repealed. The duties of the city clerk. This is another one of those places where the reality has outgrown the original function. You know, at one time, the clerk issued the licenses and the permits and kept track of them. The city clerk's office no longer issues very many of those. Police department issues some, engineering, I think, issues some, community development issues a number of them, building permits and so forth. So since the city clerk is not issuing them, it's pretty difficult for the city clerk to keep a record of issued licenses. What we're suggesting is that although would have a requirement that this, would have a statement that the city clerk issued licenses, it would be unless delegated by the manager to another department. We would then put the obligation on those people to periodically provide a clerk with the list of licenses. So if somebody wants to come in and ask for building permits or electrician permits or whatever, they would be able to get them, but that's just a more efficient way of dealing with it.
So when Justin and them issue a permit over there, it has to come back to you?
It doesn't right now.
It doesn't? Okay. So, I'll.
Who actually makes the report? Justin, y'all actually make the report?
Right, okay.
And, and there's no reason for the city clerk's office to have to keep all the reports.
Right.
What she really needs is a log. On March the seventeenth, the building permit was issued to so-and-so at such and such. She didn't need the building plans, the, any of that.
Any more questions on that matter? Okay.
Section two dash two eighty-six is one of those things that. At the, at the present time, it provides that any judgment rendered by the court may be paid by the city whenever funds are available, notwithstanding state statutes to the contrary. There was a time when state statutes said judgments can be paid in this way and no other, and required you to put it on the judgment rolls. I'm sure that this ordinance was a desire to, to have the option. But when we put may be paid by the city whenever funds are available, we didn't leave, make it clear what the other option was. So I'm suggesting that we put that in, that you, you have the option to either pay it from funds available or through assessments to the sinking fund, which is an option you have. It's just not clear.
Agreed.
Okay, two eighty-seven, the payroll disbursements, those are the policies that's, that's in the weeds, as Commissioner Stevens says. There's, there's really no, no need to get into all of that. Two ninety-one B is just, instead of saying that the petty cash account should not exceed a thousand, the suggestion is that it be one thousand or less, make it clear, not just that it should not, but it cannot. A thousand dollars is the petty cash amount, period.
Okay.
Okay.
How often is that reimbursed?
I have no idea.
Well, our average petty cash is only like three hundred dollars. It's not a big lot. When it gets slow, because we have, you know, reimburse, you know, more than twenty-five dollars, we cut a check if it's over twenty-five dollars. So once a month, once every six weeks. It really depends on the.
Use of it.
And they're reconciled and they're double-checked.
The next is Article Six, which is the Human Rights Section. It has been many years since the city has had a Human Rights Commission. It never had a lot of powers. It could investigate and make recommendations. What, what we're recommending is that we just take all of that out, but we keep the offense in there. And if someone violates the ordinances with regard to. offense in there, and if someone violates the ordinances with regard to discrimination, that we charge them with an offense in municipal court, rather than a separate administrative procedure through a separate commission that may or may not result in a fine.
And basically, what you're saying there is there's other laws that supersede that anyway?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
496 is the city clerk's office favorite thing, records management. They, that's not really their favorite thing. That's their least favorite thing. We, we just really need to change that. It allows us to save our documents on microfilm or microfiche. It doesn't talk about anything else. So, we want to bring that up to date in terms of electronic media and allow it to move as technology changes. The, the city clerk's office has almost finalized the lengthy records retention schedule. We worked on it a couple hours last week, that will make it clear what things we retain, how long we retain them, and that mostly, we'll move away from that eventually, because eventually, almost all the paper will be gone, because over time, it will be on some other media format, and we will not have a warehouse full of paper, which we currently have. We're, right now, people are, in each department are boxing things up, they're marking them a destruction date based on statute, which isn't, which leaves lots of discretion. They're being hauled to the storage area once, every six months or once a year?
Every six months.
Every six months, someone from Phyllis' office goes to this musty, non-temperature-controlled space and throws out the ones that are eligible to be thrown out, doesn't throw them out, but has them shredded.
Shredded.
Yeah, we don't throw anything away, we just shred it. And so, this will just really bring us kind of into modern times and...
Eleven-degree day, that won't get harder for that one.
Be quiet.
Go ahead, we're fine.
It's an eleven-degree day.
We're fine.
We have, we are required to have a red flag policy so that we can catch identity theft, and we need to just put a section stating that we have one, so we'd add that.
So, is all this stuff gonna be on the next agenda?
Yes, sir.
Can you lump it in?
It's just one ordinance.
Okay, just one ordinance, okay.
It's just one ordinance.
I'm not on today, they're showing the next one.
It'll be on the next one, 'cause I need to fix the two things here that we, we talked about. Okay, thank you.
Good work, good job.
But I appreciate it, because there's a lot of stuff that needs to be cleared.
Was that 15 and 16 here on their agenda?
We pulled 15 because we had a slip between the half and the half.
Okay, acknowledge a sales tax report received March 2014.
Sales tax for March was down $25,000. We received $1,265,000. If you recall, a lot of this is from January 15th, February 15th that we get, and we've had a couple of bad weekends in, for weather. So, which averages actually about $45,000 per day in sales tax.
What percent is that, being down versus our, for the month? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I have... recent, I say that, I saw in the Oklahoma City paper today, they were talking about their sales tax revenue down, if you, you saw.
We were down 1.32.
See, they were down, I, they were down like two-something, two-plus percent, I think I saw in the paper.
But overall, we're still up 3.74 percent, if you take that one lump sum out last year, 'cause that's...
Sure, good.
So, weather plays a lot in it, I mean...
All the weather's hor, you know, Dell's gone, but he and I had a conversation about that, how that, there he is, how the cold weather affected him and the lousy weather in the business, and I was out at a couple of restaurants on Kickapoo, and they said, "Lord, we need some good weather." I said, "People, just, it just hurts," so, it hurts a lot.
Next month, you know, it's better.
How, how was our online sales tax income?
It was only a $2,000 from last year. I did look at it. We usually get about, last year, this time, we got $82,000, and we got $84,000 this time. Or it was $80,000, $82,000, it was only a $2,000 difference.
That's a voluntary contribution in it for people that buy online.
Not necessarily. If, if they have a store in Oklahoma, they collect it, like me, this is a prime example. You order from there, you'll notice on the bottom of your receipt, it says "use tax."
But Amazon doesn't have a store here.
That's correct.
That's correct.
So, for all you people that are buying from Amazon, stop it. We don't get any sales tax revenue from the city.
Better yet, lobby the legislature.
You're supposed to import that on your Oklahoma sales tax.
The enforcement.
Be sure and do that.
I don't buy it. I'm all one book. Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, could I ask one more question that I thought of?
Well, sure.
Okay. How are those contracts or offers that come in kept confidential on the open market bidding or process instead of a competitive bidding?
I'm sorry, it...
How are they kept confidential? The, the...
Appraisal?
Well, when it's bid, well, when it's offered for 30 or 45 days, and those offers start coming in, how are those kept confidential?
If, if you're listing it on the open market, as you would with a Realtor, you don't, you don't keep the, the offer that's made to you confidential, but someone, the city treasurer, the city manager, someone checks it against the appraisal and advises you that you have an offer, but it doesn't meet your floor price, and then they'll have to make another. Kind of like, you know, when you try to bid at the sheriff's sale, and you've got to bid a certain amount to pay off the...
And that's during that 45 days, or?
No.
No?
You'd advertise it 45 days before you'd accept any offer.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah. I, I was just curious how, if you had a dishonest employee that saw it, and they could pick up the phone and call somebody that, a friend of theirs, and say, "Hey, so-and-so's got a..."
No, it's, no, we would keep a, a control of the offer.
But, but on the open market, it wouldn't be conf, you wouldn't have to make it confidential. You want more and more money, so if somebody has an offer for a million dollars, you'd say, "We have an offer for a million dollars," right?
But everybody would have an equal chance to make the offer, because it'd be out there
45 days before you accepted any offer.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Does that, clear that up, Commissioner Hager for you? Okay, item number 18, city, city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several things to talk about tonight, I'll be brief, though. Budget, very quickly, we are in the budget process, you probably already knew that, but I wanted to make sure that I made it a point that if commissioners have some ideas, particularly about the capital budget, that you guys want to talk about, get in touch with Cindy or myself, and let's sit down and talk about those, as it's the time.
Now, didn't we have that list at one of our meetings, and then we were to go through it? I wonder if that's been misplaced by everyone? Do y'all recall, it was like two pages, and then we were to go through it and kind of make some comments?
Priorities?
Priorities? You're talking about our capital budget?
Wasn't that, wasn't that capital? Yeah.
Certainly, we'd love feedback on that.
Could you resend that list to us, please? And let's all, let's all take some time and pay attention to that, please, okay? Okay, thank you.
Number two, merchant meetings. Myself, Justin Erickson, and Justin, our planner, have all been attending merchant meetings. I think the three of us and some of you commissioners are pretty aware of a lot of the activities that are going on there. I know that Dell's in the back, and he and Teresa Cody kind of head that up every month when they meet. I just got to tell you that in the five years that I've been here, this organization is starting to come together as a group of merchants. If you have a chance to attend their meetings, please do. They're providing direct feedback, just like the mall does, when they want something done downtown. Sometimes we can accommodate, sometimes we can't, but we're trying our best. Certainly, if other commissioners have any other positive comments they wanted to make about that, I think it's something that I've tried to make priority and attend every month, not to mention the fact that the breakfast is good, it's over at Benton's. So, sales tax. Number three, Anglin PR. Commissioner Harrod asked me about this today. Anglin is helping out with our, our PR of sales tax, not to say a lot about it, except they have been contacting local vendors, they're working on a tagline, they're working on some op-ed pieces to educate our citizens, and so, we're trying to use vendors here locally, and you'll be seeing some of that stuff come out here shortly.
Let me just stop you there again, I want to make a comment about that. When I go and speak in front of these groups, and I encourage each one of you commissioners to go and talk to them, I'm in shock. I was at a meeting with about 50 people, and at least 40 of them, I think, 35 or 40, thought that the city got its revenue from property tax. And it's, it's a difficult thing to educate the public, but we all need to, when we have the opportunity to talk to groups and come through some of these things, and figure out a way to, to educate the public, and, and they were just like in shock, they just couldn't believe that we didn't get property tax. So, let's keep that in mind when we're talking to people, and again, that, we've got to figure out a way to get this message across some way, somehow.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly, we are also in, the legislature's in session. You can say that's a good thing, or you can say that's a bad thing, but at the end of this week, all the bills that are going to be heard and where they'll end up in the process during the year will be the deadline. I'd like to highlight just a couple that are going on that are important to us. We've talked about House Bill 1875, that's where the Oklahoma Tax Commission's 1% that they take off the top of our sales tax collection would go to a half a percent. $60,000, $80,000 credit for us, just about for, for us on an annual basis, so, we're absolutely in support of that one. Senate Bill 1639, we talked about this in SEDF last week, Senate Bill 1639 would incentivize training employees that are already in-house with our industries, and industries would, would get, and again, I'm, I'm talking about these things early in advance, and they still haven't shaken out as to how they'll actually pan out, but certainly, if you're, if you're in oklahomalegislature.gov, take a look at these, this will be 1639, Quality Jobs, it's called the Quality Jobs Bill. Senate Bill 1445 by Susan Paddock, this is real importance to us. Mayor and I were at Municipal Day at the Capitol here a week ago Monday, and we learned that there was a bill in the legislature that allows potentially for you guys as commissioners to go to the voters to ask for more cellphone money than the cellphone bill. As you can imagine, this debate is pretty lively. If AT&amp;T were in the room, Jerry Bales probably would say, "No, we don't want you to be able to go to the voters and ask for more money for 911, 911 monies on the cellphone bills." But as you know, with our landlines, that's a diminishing revenue stream, so, when we've talked about this over and over again, particularly as we combine our 911 centers, we know that that's not something that's going to continue to buoy our, our expenses. This would allow for the voters, for you guys as commissioners, to put to the voters to go up to a certain amount on the ballot. So, something we've been working on, something we think would be supportive of, and OML is definitely supportive of it. So, you might want to keep track of Senate Bill 1445 by Susan Paddock out of Ada. Couple of others, and there are several out here, I'll only mention two, House Bills 1363 and 2630. We were just talking about Amazon sales and internet sales and sales tax. There are several of them out there that are trying to address sales tax, particularly by online sales, not necessarily Amazon, but certainly by those retailers that don't have a brick and mortar relationship here in Oklahoma, that when you go into their website and you purchase something, it doesn't require you to pay sales tax on it, and then, of course, they charge it to you, you pay it, and they remit it to the Oklahoma Tax Commission. So, certainly, that's a big issue these days, and, and the way that Amazon's going at things, they, they in particular are, have a lot of customers, I'm sure, in Oklahoma, other states have recognized that. Interestingly enough, I also sent an email to, to our Senator and our Representative January 1st regarding these very discussions. The problem at the legislature that they're telling me about this is, as odd for as it is for me to, to wrap my head around this, a lot of our legislators, legislators up there are calling it tax on internet sales a tax increase. Those of us that are down here trying to pay the bills and don't have sales tax to pay our staff, just can't understand that. If you buy something online, whether, whatever it is, you should have to pay the sales tax on it, just as you should if you go to Walmart and buy it. So, that would be our position. Uh, let's, let's see. Number five, kick easement. Quick little update, Brown Derby, Brown Derby had a sewer line that was about that far below the pavement of Kickapoo Street, so by the time we needed to construct that street, we had some issues there. We have had to switch gears and buy a small easement from the property owner there to the tune of $4,200, and to run a sewer line from the back of Brown Derby across Saratoga and down that side, so that we could accommodate Brown Derby. It'll also accommodate future businesses back there. It was a last-minute thing that we determined we needed to do at the end of the week last week, so, we've got a contractor working out of our pipe bursting budget to, to install that sewer line, and it was at a tune of about $23,000. So, two separate transactions, but we needed to make sure that we got that done, and I certainly can show commissioners some maps and things like that, but...
How much did you say that was?
It's, it's $4,200 to buy the easement. It's the same price that we paid for the, for the property that we bought on the, on the edge of Kickapoo Street. And then, we, we got three bids for contractors and came up with Jordan Contracting, got the, the bid for the $23,000 to install the sewer line back behind what used to be an old Mexican restaurant? I think that was taken down before I arrived on scene, but...
Harvey Valentine.
Harvey Valentine, that's the guy.
Amigos.
Amigos.
Best salsa place.
So, out of all the things that we've had issues on, that's the only sewer easement that we had issues on, and we needed to move on it pretty quickly, and I just wanted to let commissioners know that, that we had to do that.
And part of that airport property.
Yes, sir, it is. You know, and this, it's, it's right in there between Brown Derby and where the restaurant used to be, and the detention ponds are back there. It'll actually open up for more development back there, because the sewer line will actually go around the back of the property. Uh, let's see. Number six, we have been trying to identify as a staff a way to have some, some additional labor here in the city to beautify the city. And in several meetings with Keep Shawnee Beautiful folks, the mayor, James Bryce, the expo and others, you know, in the last couple of years in the spring, we've had a lot of rain, and with, with a staff of, of 10 cutting grass in town, we just can't keep up with it. Our entrances get a little shabby-looking, our parks get a little shabby-looking. I was at a meeting at, in Oklahoma City here several months ago, where we can work with a company called Center for Employment Opportunities, and/or we could potentially work with TEAM, and you may know that former Speaker of the House, Chris Steele, went to work as the Executive Director for TEAM. I'm working to try and come up with a way for us to budget for a team of people that would have a supervisor that would come into town and help augment our summertime staff in the terms of grasskeep and cutting and, and things of that nature. It's just gotten out of hand with us, so, we're trying to identify a way to do that. I'm working with these, both of these folks to come up with a number that we could put into the budget, and you guys will be looking at that through the budget process. Also, finally, something I'm really happy to report on, Steve Nelmes, myself, Stephen Nolan, we've been working with OG&E to potentially use their wireless mesh network to be able to communicate with what we want to do, which is an automatic meter reading system. Basically, there's two parts to that. One is the smart meter that we put in the ground, and then the other part is the back hauler, the network that we would need to connect to. OG&E's already got it here, so, we're still early in negotiations, but when we've talked about automatic meter reading, we've talked about up to $6 million to do that project. If there's some way we can work with OG&E so that we can use their wireless mesh, which is basically a wireless network, and it can communicate with our meters, we probably can do this for a lot less money. There may be some transaction fees that we would have to pay OG&E or work with their franchise agreement. All those things are still up in the air at this point. Just wanting to know that we can work with them, and they've sat down with us on a couple occasions, have asked Steve Nelmes with, for a lot of information, and I'll report back more to you, but I think that could be a real significant cost savings, both in terms of headache and trying to maintain a wireless network, and the, the cost, upfront cost to put that in. That was the primitive part.
Have they done that with any cities yet?
They have, actually. They're working on it with Oklahoma City right now and some other ones. I volunteered us early on and have been trying to work on it with them for a couple of years now. So, we're not definitely done with that yet, but certainly an option if they've already got that network. I think there would be some restrictions on it where, you know, we couldn't use it for profit, or, you know, we couldn't farm it out, or, you know, use password codes or anything like that, but what we'll probably end up doing based on our discussions is picking a small commercial location and a couple of hundred residential houses, particularly an area that Phyllis' meter readers have, have, you know, a tough, you know, you go, you get in the truck, you ride for a quarter mile, you get out, you read a meter, you get in the truck, you ride for a quarter mile, you know, something like that, something that we could help minimize some of that meter reading type work. And I'm real proud of that particular endeavor that we've been working on. And commissioners, that's all I have for my report, unless there's any questions.
Any questions? Okay, very good report. Thank you, sir. Okay, number 19, Chief, seemed like we've seen you before in this matter. Consider bids for the police range tower. You got it down to $10,000?
I wish. My recommendation tonight, commissioners and mayors, that we reject all three bids, and we're going to try to take on an alternate approach to this project. It's a project that's needed. As a matter of fact... As a matter of fact, the manager and I were out at the range a couple of days back. But, so what we may do is, kind of like James Bryce has done in the past with municipal court projects, is that we may run it as a, ourselves as a general contractor and he said, "Part it out."
Okay, sir. Do you think you can save enough money doing it that way to, to make it worthwhile?
Yes. Talking with one of the bidders on it, they pointed out various ways to save, various savings on the project. At this point, I was rather disappointed with the architect that worked on this project, and we have since terminated our relationship with that firm.
So, you asked, did you ask those contractors, any of them to value engineer that to see what they can come up with? Is that what you're saying?
I have spoken with, with one of the bidders after his bid was, was submitted, and he pointed out several ways that we could save money with this. I've also been in touch with Gordon Cooper, Botec, their construction people, and they're interested in possibly helping us with this project. So, we're looking at all sorts of alternatives to, to save costs on this project, so...
Well, it's one thing if you run into a snag on that, you could maybe get one of them to help you out. Of course, they're eliminating theirself from value, I mean, from bidding on it, but anyhow, they, if they value engineer it, then they could probably help you out, but want to come, if you want to rebid it, then that eliminates them because they've had the knowledge about it. But anyhow, we've done that before, is to work with a contractor, to value engineer it. But just basically on the construction, if it's basically on the material or type of material or something like that. I'm over the whip.
I don't know, we need a motion on it, do we? Do we? I'm sorry, good job, James. Need a motion to do what?
Reject the bid.
Second.
How many times, I might would bid it twice.
That's the second time, sir.
Have a motion and a second. Did you get everybody down that did that? Okay. Thanks, James, for keeping us straight.
You abstain?
Did you, were you in, were you in this discussion? You can't abstain if you were just... Thank you. Okay, item number twenty, new business.
Mr. Mayor, no new business.
Twenty-one, administrative reports.
Three of them tonight. The city engineer's going to come first and talk about our Main Street street skate project.
I thought they'd been sitting over for months not doing anything.
I feel like it.
What?
The administrative report for Main Street. We got the preliminary plans about sixty-five, seventy percent complete in your packet beginning on page 193. Hopefully, y'all could kind of peruse that, kind of see what's involved and what we're doing on this project. The Main Street project basically is going to run from Beard Street to Oklahoma Street. It'll be about five blocks, and there's six intersections. One intersection with Bell Street's already kind of redone. The other four intersections, we're going to follow the same template and pattern that we have on Bell Street. So, all the sidewalks and bump outs at the intersections, the planning areas and everything will kind of mirror what we've already done on Bell Street from Seventh to, to Tenth Street.
Does that include the signage, or does that have to come out different?
The signage?
Yeah, like we have at Bell Street now.
No, that was a kind of a add-on. We haven't gotten that kind of informative signage. I think that will be part of a wayfinding proposal later on. But that's not part of it. There will be street signage, you know, at the streets like Broadway and Main, Beard and Main. We'll do some decorative type signage on that. Again, we're going to, it's following the, the Bell Street template and also in kind of conformance with the downtown master plan, the original study that was done on that, kind of showing those layouts. The project will also include a waterline replacement from just east of Oklahoma to just west of Beard Street, because that, that corridor section is the part that we're actually reconstructing entire road template. So, we want to make sure the waterline is out from underneath the paving and also in a good condition, new, new waterline. Sidewalks, there'll be new sidewalks and brick inlay borders, just like what we've got kind of on, on Bell. As a way to kind of maybe reduce costs, we'll probably bid it out with a, an alternate for the stamped concrete. What I've seen going down on Kickapoo, it looks pretty, pretty good. But, as a way to reduce those costs, instead of the actual real brick, we'll bid that out with an alternate and then evaluate it later on.
So, how much of that area now is brick?
How much of what area?
Street?
Sorry, this is not, no, 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 no street paving is brick.
Okay.
This is the brick inlay, the border.
I mean, how much of existing street paper, brick now? Quite a bit or not much?
No, there's not going to be any brick paving. Is that what you're asking?
Existing. How much is brick, brick do you have right now?
Old street. What, existing streets are brick?
Uh, well, there's Seventh Street, of course, there'd be a Bell Street, of course, south of Main. I think Oklahoma might be in the north-south direction. We're not doing any brick paving.
We're not putting any brick back either?
No, not, other than the stamped decorative brick at the intersection.
I was going to say that Bell Street, I forgot what we did there, but that's something that's pretty rough.
That was existing, that was existing brick paving on the surface, so we didn't touch any of the existing paving. But since you bring that, that portion up, also on Main Street, instead of doing what we did on, on Bell, on Bell, because it was a historical district, we had to keep everything pretty much intact. And on Bell Street, they had the old limestone curbs that were two foot deep by four foot wide and so many inches thick of actual stone. We're not going to do that on Main Street, because we've had problems with, with keeping the, the sand bedding from the brick from leaching out and causing the brick, the individual bricks to, to settle. So, we'll be putting all new curbing in on, on Main Street. Also, the, we'll have new signals, traffic signals, decorative type at Broadway and Main, and also at Beard and Main. And we're doing that at those intersections because the north-south legs are three lanes with protected left turn movements. So, we're, we're going to be putting back the signals on that. On the other intersections, at Philadelphia and Main, Oklahoma and Main, and Union and Main, it's just two ways, two lanes, east-west, two lanes, north-south, there's no protective movements. And we're going to be getting traffic counts down there at those intersections and then evaluating the volumes and seeing if the, if, if the volumes actually warrant a signal being put back. If not, we're going to go with recommending some decorative four-way stop signage at, at a lot less cost. It would save us per intersection of about a hundred fifty to a hundred eighty thousand from that.
I'm all for that.
Also, the, what we're going to need to do here in the next few weeks also is, is contract with, a contractor to video inspect our, in camera, our existing storm sewer down the center of Main Street. We're going to need to do that, ascertain the condition of the storm sewer, and then determine whether it needs to be completely replaced, partially replaced, or, or maybe left in place. We, we just don't know the full extent of that condition. And that will add a drastic cost to this project if we have to replace all the storm sewer. And we're going to have to contract with the contractor to do that, because SMA in-house, their camera is not suitable to videotape the larger diameter pipes. They need a smaller. So, we'll be getting that within about three weeks or so. The lighting issues on, on the project, plus we still need to fully determine, it's kind of not up in the air, but hadn't been finalized yet as far as what type of street lights we're going to put in, whether we're going to use the same type as what we put on Bell Streets, which is the globe up. There's been talk about some would rather prefer the globe down or some other type of decorative light. And we'll be, I'll tell you, I'll address that a little bit later in what I'm talking about, how we're going to deal with that. The, our staff did have an informal meeting with downtown merchants, some of the shop owners and stuff, at Cafeteria Benton's Cafe, right before Christmas, to informally show them what was going on in the project and lay kind of the conceptual layout with it. And probably within about five, six weeks, we'll have a more of a formal public hearing where we'll have it advertised and seek input, that'll probably be mid-May, and get all the business owners or any interested citizen that wants to attend, see, see what we propose as far as we'll have exhibits showing the layouts and stuff, and just take written comments about what people's concerns are, and take a look at maybe incorporating some of the concerns into the final product. But we won't know that until we have the meeting to see what the concerns are. Also, as, as, as we're going forward with this, we also have to address the landscaping, irrigation plans. We haven't done that fully on this project. We have taken proposal from a landscape architect to give us a cost proposal on what that would entail. And personally, I thought it was going to be a pretty good proposal because we'd used them on the Expo and it worked out pretty good. But the cost on the proposal was just more than I could come back and recommend to this body to even go forward with. It was about twenty-six thousand dollars. And our feeling is that we could, we could do pretty much this in-house and with the cooperation and soliciting the input from the beautification committee, and also input from local gardening groups, because...
Is there going to be water available for that landscaping?
Well, there's going to be a twelve-inch water line.
But I mean...
On the north side, and that will be part of it, yeah.
Yeah, we put landscaping in, then we don't have any water in our system.
But going forward, the, the harder, hardest part, we feel like, is the design and the bump outs and the configuration that landscape architect would probably propose to us, but we've already done that. So, there, it just entails identifying what types and species of plants and how many plants would best suitable grow in these areas, so...
There's some good people on that beautification committee that knows some stuff.
That's what we're going to draft. That's what we'll be doing. So, that will save us a few bucks on that. And going forward, we would put a tentative target date of being able to actually bring back a final set of plans and being able to advertise this project, probably the second meeting in July. And that would be our, our target date to get everything going. And then, at that time, as, as we bring those plates back, we may want to decide on more of a construction sequencing, because it's going to be about a hundred eighty day construction contract. And if, if we're able to advertise it in July, bid opening won't be until the end of August, the time they get the bid documents in and everything, it might be September. And then, I would really, personally, I don't want to tear up Main Street during the Christmas season. So, I would catch a lot of flack for that, I'm sure. So, we would probably go ahead and be able to bid it out, but with the actual target date of construction maybe occurring right after Christmas. But that's something that we'd have to come back to you guys and, and finalize for sure.
The next item, yours?
Basically, it, I've covered the storm sewer, irrigation, lights, and I think that's about it.
Is the Kickapoo paving project yours?
Yes.
Would you go ahead and share that with us? Tell us it's going to be finished next week?
Well, actually, the, well, not finished, but...
Oh.
I got the plans in your packet too on, on that one, on page 213, and then it goes for about the 242. Hopefully, y'all taking a look at that. This project is one that the city participated in the engineering design. We put up a hundred, I want to say a hundred fifty thousand, and the state put up four hundred thousand to the project, just for the design and engineering. And this was last summer, and they really started hot and heavy going after it in September, October timeframe. And last week, they delivered about seventy-five percent preliminary plans complete, which is real good detail. And those have been given to us, and we'll be reviewing those within the next couple of weeks. ODOT will be reviewing those within thirty days, probably mid-April, end of April. They'll schedule a actual field meeting, and we'll go up to ODOT, and they'll give all their input and corrections that they want to be seen in the plans. And then, the contractor, oh, we'll incorporate those into it. So, and by May, May 1st, mid-May, we're looking at getting some good cost estimates for a good project to do. And then, with those cost estimates, we can approach ODOT and enter into an agreement with them, talk with them about an agreement, and also a cost sharing mechanism. The project is basically the same template as what we put on North Kickapoo. We'll put the six-foot wide sidewalks with the two-foot decorative concrete border. There's only two intersections on this project that we get the decorative stamped treatment. That's Benedict and Kickapoo and Highland and Kickapoo. If you had a chance to really look through the plans, you'll see some, some stuff that we're kind of excited about on Main Street, just to see how that, how that will go. We're proposing, because the intersections are skewed and offset, the practicality of trying to signalize that intersection with four lanes going through it and it being skewed is just problematic. So, the designer, and we came up with maybe the idea of a turnaround. And it, it looks good.
A turnaround or a roundabout?
Roundabout, turnaround. It's not, circle, traffic circle. Tomato, tomato.
How long have you been in Canada?
But I think if we can pull it off, I think it'd be a nice attractive feature as a corridor coming down Kickapoo Street to the west entrance of Main Street. And then, we can do some landscaping there, and it will make traffic flow more efficient there than just stopping at a traffic light and trying to make those sharp turns.
Teenagers like that, too.
Now, this is going to be, the, the project will be four lane all the way to that turnaround, turnabout.
I noticed that Highland and...
Traffic circle.
Highland and Kickapoo, that that's four lanes and a turn lane.
It'll be four lanes all the way to Main Street, but then pass, just pass Main Street, where we're going to transition it to a wide two lane, thirty-six foot wide two lane to Farrell. Felt like the traffic and volume, it wasn't necessary to continue a four lane section on Farrell.
You'll have to abstain from that vote, because I'm saying you're going to benefit by that good street.
Yeah.
No, on this, on this, on this project, it, it looks really good. If we can get everything situated and enter into an agreement with ODOT, say, by July, which would be real, real good, and they'll have the right-of-way plans completed, not going to be as much right-of-way acquisition on this project as North Kickapoo. And we're, we're going to be doing that in-house. We're going to be doing our own right-of-way acquisition. We had problems with somebody from Oklahoma City coming over here, not being able to meet with the property owners on timely basis and not explain the project clearly with them and everything. But I think it'll be best if we, if we do it.
How about that water line from Highland?
It's all going to be replaced, all the water, all the way, all the way to Farrell.
Sounds like the way it's going, South Kickapoo will be finished before North Kickapoo.
It, it might be, be able to let it for bids before it's... Because once the right-of-way plans are identified, then we'll start an acquisition and utility relocation. Now, ONG has already been relocating some of their lines out of the way. OG&E doesn't have any major overhead transmission lines like they did on the North Kickapoo project, so I don't look for utility relocation taken a year and a half like it did on the north side.
Well, when we went into that project, there was some discussion about whether it could be affordable, the state. Have they determined now because...
That's what, that's what...
Or not to that point?
In here, it may, may, we'll have those good hard estimates.
Okay.
We needed to wait until the project was closer to be in final design. It's about sixty-five percent.
Okay.
Because there's some off-site drainage improvements that are necessary for this project.
And they mentioned service stations and all that kind of stuff. There were quite a few of those.
That, and at Ridgewood, there's a sag, a sun.
Okay, that's fine.
We're going to have to run a storm sewer all the way down Ridgewood to the west for about two thousand feet offsite to discharge into the creek. So, there's some pretty good drainage improvement there. That's all I got.
Okay. Who's the update on convention, CVB? Is that you, Brian?
Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one. Commissioner AG asked about this, and quite honest with you, it was changing by the minute before five o'clock rolled on today, and so I'm not real sure. Let me take a stab at it. Right about mid-January, the Convention and Visitors Bureau paid for Bill Geist to come in and help us with the transition plan to our new 501(c)(6). That report came out late last week. I haven't had eyes, chance to lay eyes on it. I'll be sure to send that to commissioners so that you guys can take a look at it. I do believe there's still a meeting on the 28th of March that sort of precipitated out of the last Chamber of Commerce Board meeting, and I'm not exactly sure who's on that. I think the Mayor and myself, and the former Chairman of the Board, Joe Ford, which is replacing Tom Keller, who loves to take a job in Missouri, are on it. Dr. Whitlock was supposed to be on it from OBU. He, I think, has bequeathed his, his participation in that meeting to Nancy Keith, and I believe He, I think, has bequeathed his participation in that meeting to Nancy Keith, and I believe that Kelly Chandra, who is a CVB board member, and Kinley Ferris are both on that as well. So I'll have more information maybe after the 28th of March, but it sounds a little sketchy, but it's because really things were changing up to close the business today. Mayor, you can share anything with that?
Nope, that's all.
That's about all I know. It seems like we're not doing anything on it, but I'm not sure why it took Bill a month to get that report, two months to get that report to us, but we just got it in on Friday.
And that money's coming out of the, for you people, that's coming out of CVB that's paying for Geist and all that. Those funds are coming out of there. Okay? Any questions?
Does that answer your questions, Commissioner? I know it sounds a little cryptic, but I don't know much more than that.
That's a lot more than I knew. Thank you.
Okay. Then we're going to move on. I'll adjourn this meeting and call the Shawnee Airport Authority to order. We do have a quorum, so item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Hall. Call or roll? No, call or roll, we'll vote. Motion carries. Number two is consider approval of a commercial lease between the Shawnee Airport Authority and Scissor Tail Skydiving LLC. We discussed this at our last meeting.
Yes, we did. Well, we discussed our amendment to our resolution, skydiving operations out of the airport, rules and regulations, and this is pretty much, this is kind of why we did that. This is a, this is a lease between the airport and Scissor Tail Skydiving LLC. They are a skydiving company that offers tandem skydiving, solo instruction, and they are requesting to lease the, what we call hangar 13 offices. This is office space that's attached to our largest and oldest hangar out at the airport. And being that it's so old is that the offices aren't in the greatest shape. They need a lot of cosmetic work, and Scissor Tail is wanting to lease this space, make some improvements, and what we've prepared to do is offer a discounted lease rate for some length of time for them to make those improvements and kind of ease the cost that they're going to do. We do this with a lot of properties on the airport, seeing how we don't have a whole lot of money to make improvements, we kind of offer discounted rates.
So they're going to rent the hangar, too, or just the office?
They're going to rent a hangar spot, and that'll be in a separate lease, which we, myself and the city manager authorizes quite a bit. So this is just for the office space. Just a quick brief about Scissor Tail Skydiving, just to let you know what kind of company this is. They're, currently they have an operation out of Waverly, Waverly, Tennessee, by a different business name. We're going to call them Scissor Tail Skydiving, just so we don't cause confusion. And they're looking to branch out, and they found Shawnee, and they think it's a good place to do business. Currently, there's four skydiving places to go here in Oklahoma, one in Cushing, a couple around the Tulsa area, and one in Chickasha. So if they came here in Shawnee, we would be the, they would be the closest to the Oklahoma City metro area, and they think they can capitalize on that, on that market, Oklahoma City area. Like I said, they operate out of Humphrey County Airport in Waverly, Tennessee, right now, and they've done a lot of business out there, and they've been really successful. In their first year out there, they increased the fuel sales of the airport by 94%, which is a lot. I think, I think before they went out there, they sold about 11,000 gallons a year. In contrast, we sell about 70,000 a year, and they turned it around, and I think the first year of operation, they sold about 36,000 gallons. So the increase in fuel sales won't be as drastic as they probably were in Tennessee, but there'll be a significant increase in fuel sales here in Shawnee. And I'd be happy to go over the, just some of the terms and the highlights of the lease.
Just a couple of questions.
Sure.
Did they make any, if we're offering a discounted lease rate, did they make any commitments on how much money or what they're going to do?
Yes, yes. What we're doing is, we're going to, it's a 10-year lease, and we're going, with an option to renew for an additional 10. For the first five years, we're going to offer them a lease rate of a dollar a square foot. We typically charge a dollar fifty out of the airport for office space, and what that will do is, is over the five years, save them about $30,000. And myself and the rip and Scissor Tail have both decided that the repairs that are going to be made are going to be anywhere from 20,000 to 25,000 dollars, and we've had a contractor look at that, and that's about the price they've given us. Once that five years is up, we'll change, we'll go up to the dollar fifty a square foot. So that's kind of what we're offering them.
How many square feet is that?
960 square feet, so you're about $960.
Has the airport board signed off on this?
They have.
Okay.
They signed off on this last week, that they recommend, they believe it to be a fair lease, and they recommend it.
Any other questions?
Well, it's kind of related questions, since they're, you know, this is moving pretty fast. You know, there was an article recently, it made today, the paper about the age limit on who can skydive.
State law, 18 years old, and I asked Jacob Crouch, he's the one that owns the business, and he'll, he's in the audience, and he'll be the one that, he's moved out here to Shawnee, and I asked him if that was going to be any concern, and he said no, because they don't even offer skydiving to anybody under 18 years old, so it's not.
That's why I was going to ask.
Lots of this, the skyline diving industry, whoever's in charge of that, demanded theirs to be 18 years of age, that's in the paper this morning.
Okay. No further questions? I guess I probably need a motion on this matter, huh, to approve this?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Commissioner Hall, a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Motion carries. Any new business?
No new business, sir.
Any administrative reports?
Administrative reports.
Okay, then I will adjourn the airport authority, and I'll call to order the municipal authority. We do have a quorum, so on item number one is consider approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, a second by Commissioner Winteringer. Motion carries. Any new business?
No new business or administrative report, sir.
Then I move, we adjourn then, and I'll adjourn our city commission meeting.